In committee meeting. Joe Order. You all got that, right? All right. Going to be opening the meeting up to the public, so.
Chairwoman.
Yes.
You cannot open this meeting. This meeting needs to be canceled. Because you improperly publicly noticed this meeting like you normally do. This meeting is to be canceled.
Corporate. I'm going to have you.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
Well, does the corporation counsel have in front of him our city charter? Yes or no?
No, I don't have it in front of me.
Does our corporation counsel have in front of them state statute Freedom Information Acts? About meetings? Yes or no?
Why don't you get to the point and tell me what your objection is?
I don't have an objection. This meeting is not going to be held because it was illegally public notice like it always is. Period. This meeting is supposed to be publicly noticed five days in advance. According to our city charter. Do you understand that?
I understand that. I'm questioning whether it was or not.
It wasn't. It was installed on the city website. Okay, on Thursday and it was revised on Friday. Therefore, it only gave two day notice Saturday and Sunday. Period.
I think we're good to go.
No, you're not good to go. I'm standing here and this is canceled meeting, period.
Well, you don't have that authority.
I do have that authority because you illegally posted the meeting.
Well, you can object.
I'm not objecting. This is not a court of law. You illegally posted the meeting like you always do. And this meeting cannot be held legally.
Chairwoman can ask you to be removed.
Excuse me, the chairwoman cannot open this meeting being illegally posted. What don't you understand about that?
We understand your objection.
I'm not objecting here. This meeting was illegally posted according to our charter. Why don't you read it right now? I'm not objecting at all. This meeting will not be held. It's canceled.
Thank you, Michael.
No.
You can sit down.
I'm standing here. This meeting is to be canceled. Because anything transpired.
Yep. We'll call the police.
Call the police.
Michael.
Because this is illegal and nothing could be conducted.
We would not have conducted the meeting.
Chapter forty-one dash one. Can you read it? Does anybody have this? Five days notice.
Heather, can you make it follow them?
I remember you hit the button there. So we ought to have somebody here.
Yeah. You can't conduct an illegally posted meeting, period. If you want to call the police to arrest me, then call the police to arrest me.
Mr. Benz, Eric, you have your remedies. You know, you can.
What remedies is that?
You can appeal. You can go to court.
No, I can't appeal and go to court. I'm stopping you right now.
You don't have that authority.
Yes, I do have that authority.
I'm sorry, but you don't.
The people approved our city charter, Mr. Royer. You didn't approve our city charter. Our people did.
Neither did you.
And the state of Connecticut approved it.
And neither did you.
The people did. Okay?
But you didn't, so you have no authority.
And and the state statute really dictates.
The people will decide what is right when you go to court. That's when the people decide.
The justice department will decide, okay?
So we can have you.
Not you.
This is an illegal meeting.
I'm going to ask you for the first time and maybe the last time if you could please sit down.
Well, I'm going to sit down. You're illegally conducting a meeting. Don't forget that.
Thank you.
We won't forget.
Don't forget.
Thank you.
You could have the police come and arrest me, no problem.
As long as you sit, sit down, you're fine.
You're leaving? As long as I sit down, you're threatening me now?
No, you're fine.
For holding our law? And you're going to arrest me against our law?
Okay, I'm voting to open the meeting.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
I thought it was open emotion.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cavener. The meeting is now open to the public. Are there any other comments?
I do to follow up on Mike Benz's comments. I am reading forty-one dash one time limit for publication notice of public meetings and hearings. It does state at least five days previous to the date such meeting or public hearings. So it is in our city charter and I think we should review that charter. And have more advanced warnings and agendas published to the public prior to these meetings.
I'll note your objection.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-second or twenty-eighth?
Some move. Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
So we're having a discussion regarding the food truck ordinance. It was emailed out to you and as you can see, there's all kinds of edits based on the public hearing that we had recently. So with all of those comments, we were fortunate at this point to I don't know if someone's. Okay. Yes. Yes, we had a little bit of controversy. I think we're good now. Thank you. So have you had a chance to look it over? And I know unfortunately, as noted by corporate counsel, our police chief and Sergeant Baltus, who have been very involved with this ordinance are not here tonight.
I can report the the version that's currently before the committee was drafted by the Chief Sergeant Baltus and myself.
Thank you.
And after two or three meetings, we both, we, three of us, and I think it's been before this committee once again after the public hearing to now that I recall. And we're convinced that the public hearing comments have all been incorporated into this new draft that I that you have.
Yep.
I passed out. Heather passed out a clean copy. I passed out a copy showing all the track changes. If there's any question, I realize that sometimes it's hard to follow those track changes, but I think if you looked at it closely, you'll find that most of the comments that were made at the public hearing have been incorporated.
And if the committee remembers, we actually did not vote on the ordinance until we were able to really solicit more comments.
Right.
And I want to thank corporate counsel and the police chief for sort of taking into account all of the comments that were made, in particular, the section having to do with talking about. And these aren't pages aren't numbered on here, but I want to refer to, actually, I do like your rough draft of this. That where the police chief says that's that whole section has been taken out. So.
And then the the other section that we had some discussion on quite a bit of this question is what happens to a vendor? Who has been in a location for a number of years.
Right.
And then someone moves in, a brick and mortar moves in within five hundred feet.
Right.
What we did in that case is provide for some kind of grandfather clause. And I can point that out.
What is the mechanism by which that works?
Yeah, I'm going to find it. I just have to find it. It would be on. We should have this page numbers, but it would be section one fifty-eight dash six. Then you turn the page. Section B. At the top of the page, it says each such license, no matter when issued, shall be valid for a one-year period beginning on March first and expiring on the last day of February. That was there before. But we added any vendor who has been permitted prior to the enactment of this ordinance and who has occupied a particular location for at least a number of consecutive years. We left it blank. Because that can be determined at this point.
Right.
Whether you want to say five years, whatever the number is you want to put in there shall be permitted to continue though within five hundred feet of an establishment selling like items. For as long as the vendor continues to be the yearly permitting and meets other criteria required by this ordinance. Any vendor who loses such permanent stat- status for health or other legitimate reason may appeal in accordance with section such and such of the charter. There is a section that we would just look in the correct section would go in there. So anyway, that's the explanation that we're.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. Let let me.
I'm on comment. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two things. Number one. Because of all the broad broad view, big picture view on what we're doing right now. Because of all these changes and and you know, it's challenging to try to follow them for understandable, you know, there's actually quite a lot of changes here. And the net result of that is that I'm perfectly fine discussing them item by item, but I don't want to make any act, take any action on this tonight until we have the chief here because there's certain clearly in certain instances, this gives again, it's not in any way an indication reflection on our current chief. It is just a position of it seems to give them an awful lot of authority and I'm not sure if the authority rightly resides with the chief or with planning and zoning, for instance, or council or some other, you know, discretionary call. There's
Yep.
Certain areas that are clearly discretionary calls and I'm not sure it resides specifically with the chief of police. Maybe his planning is, I would like to have that as part of a discussion with the with the chief.
Sure.
To find, does he really want all this landing on him? I'm not sure he does. Given the fact that there is a growth in these kind of trucks and and you know, it's, I would assume there's going to be further growth in this area is I'd just like to hear from him. I will step down. I believe we have another officer responding. Chairwoman.
Yes, there was, but I think we've managed the situation and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do think this, and I think it's because of the changes. I think I'm not, I have no I do not intend to specifically read the minds of anyone, but I think some of the objections that we heard from earlier has to do with the fact that you know, we with this being a sensitive area and a publicly, you know, where the public is clearly watching this, you know, we got this fairly late and I would like to hear actually some more public input about this form of the document, what they think.
You know, this is going back to public hearing. It'll go back.
It will go back to public. Okay, so that's good. So that takes that and and it was if, so I would like to hear and think more about if a brick and mortar, we got a brick and mortar who wants to move in, say they want to do some sort of god knows what's, you know, this kind of establishment. There's already a truck nearby. The brick and mortar people who are going to invest significantly more money in our town to put that establishment in place, maybe deterred from from doing that because that person with a lot less overhead is going to be sitting there for the next five years, you know? And I would like to think, is that something that, what do other people in the city who again, planning is people who regularly deal with this kind of trying to make deals for the city for this kind of retail stuff, what they think about that, you know? Could that possibly be a you know, deterrent effect of of new businesses coming to town?
That's why we left that blank for the number of years. We didn't know what the position would maybe do a shorter period of time rather than
Yeah.
Longer period.
And I think that's actually, you know, the significant conversation. It could be. I'd like to hear from the mayor and from, you know, whether it's real estate people or border finance or planning and zoning, what do they think about that? Because clearly we don't want to. We're having a hard enough time bringing people in. So.
I I think the intent was because it was brought up in public hearing. So if a, you know, a food truck vendor had a spot they've had for twenty years, thirty years. We know of such people.
Yeah, I know. I know, I know. But we are responsible for the big picture, the city, you know, the big picture view and and we have to evaluate that. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. Maybe this is just a molehill. Maybe it is. But it has a potential for getting out in this.
Yeah. I think in terms of speaking for the chief, I think we were all under the same impression that when you speak about the chief, you're really talking about the department.
Yeah.
In other words, who makes those decisions?
Yeah, and I understand that Vic and I agree, but and I'm saying, do we want, again, I'm not sure that's the officer, that's the office that should be making these calls. I don't know. I'd like to hear from planning and zoning, actually. I would, you know, to see if maybe they think that should be more there.
Well, it is an enforcement issue, but I absolutely agree that it might need some review by planning and zoning and possibly sending this Jeremy.
We could do this.
You know. So particularly this section because it's new.
Yeah.
And it was in response to the concerns that were brought up in the public hearing.
And I would think they would, they would know who people approaching them long term, you know, they would know three, four, five different kinds, groups of people want to do something. Couple of people want to do something similar. Chief of Police would not necessarily know.
So would rest.
Rista Malca too.
Yeah.
So we can still move this forward to a public hearing.
Yeah.
You know, since the police chief and
My only comment on that is that I'm questioning how many public hearings you want to have on the same ordinance because you know, you might make a change and then do we then have another public hearing after that change?
Well, at least one more.
We can actually table it for tonight.
Yeah.
Have it actually reviewed by planning and zoning.
Yeah, okay.
We can do that.
Yeah.
We're in no hurry. I think.
I agree. Let's get it right now.
Yep, and I appreciate that Vic, that you don't have multiple public hearings. We have this is an ordinance that's important to the vendors.
Yeah.
And we want to get it right.
It's going to be around for a while. That's right.
Yeah. And when we say public hearing, we know what we're talking about. The public in that, in this instance, will be the vendors will show up and that's good. You know, so.
So for the next ordinance, we can table this for tonight. Heather, can you send this or Vic, you know, send it to both Jeremy and to.
Yeah, just one, one more thing to look at. One fifty-eight dash three.
Yeah.
Number nine. I think I work, I think applicant for some, something was crossed off and shouldn't have been crossed off. I'm trying to read it and it says a statement as to whether or not the the what has been.
Yeah, I think that's a typo. I think that should be applicant.
Applicant, right?
Has been convicted of a crime. Yep, you're right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading.
You're right. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So with that, can I get a motion to table this for?
I would like one more comment on this. Okay, again, in lieu of what was expressed earlier in the meeting. If we could get, when we do know notice this, can we, can we have a look at what the ordinance actually says about posting this type of information to the public in the proper timeframe so that people can get their hands on it to I don't want to, I don't want to revisit this conversation.
And I think this is an ordinance committee, so any, anything that we pass here has to go to public hearing or through the council, which does give the adequate notice and I'm going to I will deter to the city clerk's office, not tonight, but if you could look at that. But I do think we have conducted these meetings for as many years as I've been on.
And it's very possible we have been doing them incorrectly, so let's, let's.
I don't, I don't think so. I think because it's
Let's get a determination. That's what I'm asking.
Of course.
Okay.
We've had two objections in the public part of this meeting, which normally we don't even have a public portion of it. So anyway, with that, can I get a motion to table this ordinance for our next scheduled meeting?
Well, whoever made the original motion, which is you modified, modify to table.
Yeah, yeah, modify it to table.
Nice second. Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, then we're going to move on. We're going to have a discussion on the garbage collection ordinance. I know Ray Drew is here. Also gotten that email to you. This is a much larger, believe it or not, than the food truck. I guess maybe depending on the party who's interested, which will be all of
Yeah.
our community. So do you want to begin? I know you've spent a lot of, a lot of time on this, Ray. Going through it a bit.
Yeah, so if you go ahead and look at that, the well, you don't have a colored version, but the lighter versions in the package that Heather has given you are the changes. The solid black would be the existing language. The first section, as I had mentioned the last time, we had definitions in several articles of this ordinance.
Right.
So in order to streamline it, all the definitions were moved to one twenty-eight one. And the the ones that are that have the red in them were either changes to the definitions or deletions. The automated refuse container.
Is yours?
There is, there was a provision in that definition that additional containers will be available on annual fee determined by the board of councilmen.
Ray, we just as a FYI, we don't I have colored version, but I don't know if anybody else has.
No.
Colored versions.
So if you look at.
And it's not old man friendly. The font size. Yeah, I need copitals, Ray. Okay, so.
So if you look at the copy that Heather is giving you.
Right. But it isn't, you know, it doesn't have the color coding, but it does have, you know, the the bolded, which.
I can barely read this.
Yeah, this lighter stuff.
Yeah, like. So that's what you're adding in terms of. Sorry, let's not waste city dollars on color.
So it's a change in some of the definitions.
Old man approved, ARPA, ARPA approved font, please.
You have an application?
ARPA, oh God, I've been a member for twenty years.
All right, so this is a very large and the definitions that you've changed, you know, are basically the ones that are underlined and are.
Correct.
Okay.
In lighter print. Yeah.
We're supposed to vote on this tonight? Did you want to vote on this?
I don't think we'll be voting tonight.
No.
This is a very large ordinance that needs
Good.
More discussion.
And I need to read the glasses, so I'm not even going to attempt to. Was there anything, can I ask a question? Is there a specific thing you wanted to direct us to do? For the purposes of the next conversation, are there certain areas that you would like to highlight for us to look at?
Well, some of the things that we added to the ordinance was language around organic waste and food scraps.
Okay, where where is that?
Well, that's in compostable materials. Bulky, bulky waste, but.
Or organic waste, food scrap.
Right.
Third page.
Yeah, can you just give me the the actual code, one twenty-eight, something, right?
Well, it's still under definitions.
Oh, really? Okay, all right.
And wouldn't you say one of the larger things has to do with the permit?
Has to do with, we added language about bulk waste permits as well as in litter twenty-one, twenty-eight dash two. So we have an issue with people putting out material on sidewalks. So we wanted to try and address that so that the material was not put on sidewalks that would impede pedestrian traffic. Put in language in regards to dumping on public lands. Yeah, the distribution of handbills, that whole section is new to what we don't want. And not that I think that it's a huge issue, but it's language that I thought might be useful if there's individuals that distribute handbills by scattering them on the street. It's just to prevent litter.
Okay.
Okay.
So keep in mind, this was, you know, this is a huge ordinance that's going to have significant, you know, changes in how we manage our waste and
Correct.
You know, particularly what the cost has been to the city in terms of its waste. So I know that the trial, and I have a couple of questions because the application that residents need to apply for online. How is that going? There's still no fee to.
Right, there's still no fee associated with that. One of the things is it's people are getting the message. We are processing the applications or and or permits. The amount of material that's being collected is down. So therefore our cost is down. What we have been finding at the initial onset is that we actually did catch people that were bringing it from out of town. Or out of state. So those are collection numbers are down. And I don't see, I mean, I drive around the city a lot and I don't see where we're having you know, these huge piles or that's being left there. I mean, I think the message is is getting out. We've we sent out the notice in the tax bills as well as, you know, being on the website and Linda has talks to, you know, you know, hundreds of people a week that apply for permits. So I think it's going well for the initial onset.
Good.
Can I offer, ask, ask, I'd like to make a suggestion. Maybe this is again, slightly off base here, but but that brought up a point to me about you driving around, you know, and some of your team basically doing this, this very random sort of ad hoc anecdotal right, in data, data gathering. I'm wondering what would, what would it take and would it be beneficial to have a hotline number? Okay, I think there's a lot of irate citizens, a lot of irate citizens who live in their neighborhoods, they see abuses going on all the time. Is there some, is there some way we can just set up a hotline?
Um, I think, I think we can definitely do that. I will speak with our IT department to get a number for us and we can then publish that number.
Yep.
If you, you know, and message it if there's, you know, residents sees abuse. I mean, we do get calls from neighbors.
Isn't it said, does it need to be a hotline or can be the direct line?
Be a direct line.
Public works particularly.
Yeah, something in a little, a little, a little blurb in the paper to alert people. This is, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And see if we get you know.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. It's also still another messaging tool. You know, we had a neighbor call and said that the guy showed up with a pickup truck and unloaded the pickup truck at the neighbor's yard. Obviously, highly unlikely a resident, may have been an owner. So we've had calls where, you know, that it's a tenant and she indicated that that the landlord brings stuff all the time. So we searched the owner and he's from Norfolk. So we know that the abuses are there.
Yeah.
I think what we're developing is now it's the accountability. Because we're not picking up anywhere prior to this, I mean, our contractor, they just picked it up.
Yeah.
So now you have to register to get it picked up.
Yeah.
So now we're collecting the address, the name of who's requesting it. And then being able to track how many times that address has called for a bulk pickup.
Yeah.
So this has penalties in it as well.
Good. If we go, if we go to the hotline room, you know, again, talk to the paper, you know, and and radio, get Jeff Ziner or something. But but let a couple of things that that a reporting person, suggestions, recommendations, like get a snap of a license plate, something that your, your department can use, not just, hey, there's a guy.
Right.
Who's doing this. Anything that can help identify.
Right, and see if we're going to, we, the last thing, yeah, I mean, if they could take a picture or something like that, you know, from a safe perspective.
Yes, right.
I don't want residents kind of confronting. Yes, so we can develop, you know, what would be helpful to us to
Correct.
To track their users down.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, a pattern if they know it's happening every Tuesday morning or anything that would be helpful to you guys.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
Can you go? Could you go over some of the penalties because these are new, just as a reference? That's running a section of one twenty eight dash four.
Which section is that? One twenty four dash three.
Yes.
So a violation of the article of applying not exceeding a hundred dollars per day where each day is a violation. Enforcement by police officers, we've had. We've had meetings with the chief and in the, in those discussions, what our process is, is to ensure enforcement is after the third failure or the third occurrence, then we notify the the police to take action. It's considered an infraction. And then each event, so if you did it on Tuesday, that's a separate infraction as if you did it on Wednesday. So, and then there are actually state statutes that provide for prosecution.
Have they noted in here, are they referenced, you know, they are, they are in that C of that section, correct?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. So you said currently there's been a few people who have, you've kind of caught. What what's been done about those?
Well, we haven't actually caught the people who've been notified either by a neighbor. So then we just track that property a lot closer.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you know, we we did hire the MSW coordinator. It's been a little slow getting her replacement in that department. And therefore she has not had a great opportunity to be out on the road. So, you know, part of that was that she would be on the road. You know, performing spot inspections or going to these and talking to the neighbors and but getting her to that point, it's been a little slow of finding a replacement for her in the department.
Her previous position.
Yes.
Right.
So she's kind of doing.
And what was that, what was that position prior to?
To senior clerk for the.
Yeah, thank you.
Then Article two. All the definitions noted were were moved to twenty one, one. Authorization of city contract, there's not a lot of change there.
Like it's when you get to Article three that we're adding substantial amount of new language. Actually, is it a whole new section?
Article three is an entirely new section focused strictly on recycling. Basically laying it, you know, it's having the information out there that by state statutes, recycling is mandatory. So just trying to get that laid out as to, you know, what residents, what city's responsibility is in regards to recycling and what some of the the penalties associated with it are. So Article three is is an entirely completely new section.
Does it mirror the state statute?
It does.
So I think this is a section that, you know, warrants a lot of review by my fellow members. Before we even consider bringing this for a public hearing, it's, it is a whole new section, and I think thanks, thank you to Ray for his work on this. And if it does mirror, I think it's a lot easier when it mirrors what the state statute.
Yeah.
Provides. And it's less challenging. Would you agree that?
I would agree, yep. As far, I was suggesting, as far as process, this is, this is such an impactful ordinance to everybody, right? That maybe we we start thinking, you know, in terms of next steps, we as an ordinance committee take an, take another swing at it, then bring it before the public, maybe go full council to just get more eyes on it, more sort of our councilmen's eyes on it, get more feedback, you know, surgically, and then open it up to the the public, you know? Because once you open it to the public, it's going to be a free for all, and I'm not sure we're going to get the kind of clarity that we want to get.
Correct, and I think, you know, this is on the agenda as a discussion. There's no approval, it's and I think I appreciate the fact that, you know, let's, let's look at the process of which we, this is a very large ordinance. And particularly that entire section three added to the ordinance, so.
How about an executive summary? Would that be helpful in terms?
To bring to the council? That would be very helpful. Would you prepare that or?
Highlight the, you know, the the major portions.
I don't know if that's the next step, we go to full council, maybe you want to meet one more time as an ordinance committee to look, to look at that document.
Yeah.
Yep. Try to, to try to really keep this thing as as tight and controlled as we can and then so next ordinance, then full council, and then depending on how that discussion goes, it comes back to ordinance maybe. Or it goes to the public, we'll have, you know, let's see.
Make a determination.
At that level, yeah.
But I really, so if this committee could look at that section three.
Yeah.
And so when you say the language mirrors the state statute, can you tell us at this point where it does and maybe where it doesn't?
Yeah, so the state statute, anywhere where we're mirroring the state statute, it's cited. The state statute is cited, so for example, one twenty eight, twenty seven. Notwithstanding any other sections, the city acting by the administrative recycling may impose a penalty not to exceed five hundred dollars for each violation. So for a commercial establishment, so if we find it that a commercial establishment under state statute is required to recycle, under state statute, they're required to recycle, but if they're not recycling, then the city can take action against them as outlined in twenty two A to forty one B. So anywhere we were addressing the state statute, the state statute is cited.
Okay, perfect.
So every business needs to recycle.
It is a state, yes, state law.
And then it is the municipality's job to enforce that, is that what you're saying?
They, they, it's not necessarily necessary job to enforce it, they can take action against, if they have, but also the commissioner can take action.
Okay.
So I'm, I know we all need to look at this closer, so the municipality would have more of control on the amount of.
Right.
Fees.
So every hauler that works in the city must register with the city.
Okay.
So you can't have just, you know, ABC trash company just come to Torrington and start collecting trash. They have to be registered with the municipal in order to conduct that service in the city.
And that's a requirement.
That is a state statute requirement. We currently have three licensed haulers in in Torrington. They've, they've worked in Torrington for years, they register every year. You know, it fluctuates some years, we'll have another one for a couple of years and they go away and. But I think the three haulers that we do have that have been in Torrington for quite some time have probably likely cornered to market in Torrington. But they are required to be licensed and registered with the municipal. And then the state statute gives us enforcement authority if they don't register. And they have to register annually.
So I think, you know, to Paul's point in terms of process, if we could nail down and agree on Article one and two at the next meeting, maybe vote on those two sections and then have discussion on Article three.
As an, as ordinance committee only.
Oh, yeah, it all has to go to public hearing, but that would give us two sections of this ordinance that would be approved by the ordinance committee.
Yes.
And then have a just larger discussion on chapter or the Article three, so that we can move this forward.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? And then I love Vic's idea in terms of some kind of executive summary, maybe after the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, to prepare for a presentation to the council. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
And then Article four is new as well. There were some fee language that was scattered through the ordinance. So my thought process was to consolidate that into one section, and you could say it's a very short section. The automated refuse container fee, bulk waste permit fee, should we implement one? A ref, the refuse collector registration fee, which I just mentioned, they have to be registered, and then a sanitation service.
So if we can have on the agenda for the next meeting approval of the first two articles and possibly the fourth, since it's very short section. Armand, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. And then a larger discussion on Article three. So I think with that, we'll move on. Do you have anything else to add, Ray?
Um, yeah, not at this point, but.
We're on to the next regarding the tree ordinance.
The tree. Yeah.
It's trees before them.
I love trees.
Okay, good. Some of the ordinances.
Okay.
It does.
If we're in agreement, we're going to move on to Agenda five, which is discussion regarding the tree ordinance. So this is chapter, yeah.
So.
Go ahead, right?
So you noticed it highlighted Chapter one eighty one, I looked for a good place to put it, there was no Chapter one eighty one. It is a J. You know, I mean, that understanding that this is a completely new ordinance, all the language is new. It's kind of a review, part of it, you know, statement of purpose, why we want to protect trees, you know, why we don't want people injuring public trees.
So this is all based on public property. Can you just some here, but why? This has been an issue, usually it's becomes an ordinance because it's been a.
We've had instances, if you recall Franklin Plaza. As virtues were planted, the following year we had people, somebody etched their initials into almost every one of those trees. If you recall, over here on Main Street, when we planted the main trees, a store owner did not like the tree, so hacked the tree. He eventually died, has not been replanted at this. It's also part of it is being able to and identify what hazardous trees are in, you know, you know, on our streets. So as the tree warden, I'm only only have authority to manage the public trees. So that that would be the trees that are either in our right of way or on our property. So.
That's all we want to go.
Yeah, and and I do have a little bit of a selfish motive for this. So I would like to get us designated as Tree City. It's called Tree City USA. And I don't know if you've heard of it or not, but it is an organization that, you know, promotes urban forests, trees in cities, I mean, trees are, they're healthy for a city, especially in urban forests. They provide shade, they keep the the heat away from the the pavement and allow the pavement to heat up as much and therefore you don't have that thermal effect in in downtown, so being a proponent of, you know, trees and gardens and that has been kind of a little of a passion of mine and.
Go on, I have a question.
Yeah, so I mean, that was kind of some of the impetus of when we've had damage and we had no recourse, you know.
Is that a destruction of public property? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It fall under.
Yeah, wouldn't it be just like if if someone broke a street light or something like that, it would be the same thing.
Yeah, I think we could make, I think we could make an argument, destruction of public property. But I think having an ordinance that kind of conveys that message that, you know, you you can't just cut down a public tree. So like if if, so our street right of ways are typically five feet on either side. So you can't just have people planting trees in sight right of ways, you have sightline issues. So, you know, just trying to, part of it is to make sure we have the right message and we have a consistent message, you know.
Yeah.
I defer to.
Yeah, this, this is, I I know this is, this is a more complicated idea, complex idea. The idea of being able to do this kind of stuff for, on specifically city land, you know, so that we have all kinds of authority to do that and we should do it, and kudos, I'm glad we're doing it. I would like us to think about, is there some way that we could leverage some of the this ordinance to give us some control over the kinds of things that are happening in land that is not owned by the city, but that clearly, I I'm thinking specifically of the Eversource solar farm up on East, East Pearlville. Okay, and that, when that came down in front of the city council, I know, I know, again, it was St. Peter's Leased and Altu Private, you know, energy consortium and all that, I get that, but I do know when it came in front of the council, I specifically repeatedly asked, because I've seen way, way, way too many of these proposals where we get the pretty pictures and they're going to landscape and they're going to do tree and the and the reasons they're going to do the trees is because, you know, they're going to cut down all that beautiful farm and all the beautiful corn and crop that that was made that area so pristine and beautiful, and they were going to replace it with tremendous, you know, very beautifully landscaped stuff. And as we all know, they went cheap and and they went cruddy on it, and and now it's not only an eyesore, but it's it's, it clearly is not in keeping with what their promises were to the city. And I don't know how to give us some control or some way of of bridging to the citing council that would approve this to give the city some, if you're going to do this and you're going to sell us on this idea that you're going to put trees and things to replace the vegetation that you're taking down for all the reasons we want to do that.
Right.
We as a city should have some authority somewhere along the way to step in when you're clearly breaking your agreement. And I don't know if this is the right ordinance to do that, but I would like to at least think about that, okay?
Yeah, I I think we would have to do a lot more, you know, I mean, research is to, could we leverage that to a piece of property that's not a public?
You gotta be careful of that.
It'll be a little different, I mean, you're picking an example that's a little that's different than, you know, it's a citing council issue. Where there may be a lot of other examples which are not citing council.
And and thanks to the, you know, the council that was in place at the time, sorry, Armand, but, you know, the council voted to send a very strong letter to the
Yeah.
Siding council with our objection, because we already had another application down by On South Road at the same time before the siding council. And if you remember, it was during COVID, they slipped it in pretty quick.
Yeah.
Without a lot of ability for people to give public comment.
No.
And obviously the people who gave the most public comment were those seeing it every day and.
Well, clearly it affects their property value, it affects the the whole usage of that whole Feshad Donnelley field. I mean, I bought my kids up there and and it it's completely, you know, you know, what's the word I want? Compromised the the beauty of that whole thing, you know, and and somehow, I I don't know if this is the proper way to go about it, but I would love to try to find some mechanism by which, when somebody comes in, we as a city, based on our ordinance.
Did potentially have some leverage to
Yeah.
require them, I mean, we can do it, and there is language in in the ordinance, so we have a the new high school project as an example. Well, as part of that project, they submitted to me their landscaping plan as part of it, the removing eighty eight trees.
How many?
Eighty eight.
Wow, at the high school?
At the high school.
Where?
Just all around the perimeter.
I think a lot in the back.
Yeah, a lot in the back.
In the back. In the back.
Um.
Was that Dill drive?
So as part of my requirement and before codified it, I required them to replace trees one by one, one to one.
Okay.
So they are planting ninety one trees.
On the, on the perimeter, I would assume.
On the property.
Yeah.
Different places, different places throughout the property. So it's, it's part of that. And I think that's where you're thinking about, could we leverage something like that? Is there something in a statute where we could either in, you know, land use or some other statutes where we could kind of leverage that, say, okay, well, if you want to develop this like a subdivision or something. Well, and you're clearing, you know, virgin land. Well, you have to kind of do something.
In accordance with the city ordinance.
Typically, they kind of give us a little conservation piece of land, right?
Conservation easement or something.
Conservation easement or something like that. Am I correct in assuming that's the, what you're asking?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, it wasn't just to make it pretty, though. There was a re, it had to do with sound, sound.
Well, it's sound barriers, it's screening, it's.
Correct, and screens and everything else.
So like I've been trying to, I've been working with EverSource, trying to screen their substation on Franklin's Drive. So you know, if you drive down Franklin Drive, you just see that substation.
Yeah.
On board for green screen. So when we go and do that road, we're going to work, try and work collaboratively with them to install a green screen or basically trees. Some other, so that that's not you know, to make it more aesthetically, please.
Indeed, indeed. So I, again, I guess at the end of the day, what I'm asking, as we go forward with this new ordinance, let's think about those kind of ways that we could use so that if if a citing council has, you know, if the citing council says that you will build this in accord, also in accordance with the city of Torringtons, blah, 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 blah. It gives us some sort of teeth to monitor and control.
Twenty years from now.
Well, it starts somewhere.
I'm totally in agreement. So I think at this point, it's on, we had discussion only on this topic, if we could bring it back again, you know, the next agenda, if there's I, I think to Paul's point, are there any other municipalities that have other language that might, you know, particularly with a state, you know, the Connecticut Citing Council is a semi quasi or quasi state enforcement, the citing council.
Well, it's a state agency.
It's a state agency. So, you know, I think that point, you know, we should probably see if other municipalities have any language that could, that we could.
That research and then at our next meeting, come back and see if I found anything at that point. Deep would probably, and their regulations might have something as well. You know, and.
Well, they made lots of promises to Paul's point and now the company's been sold multiple times.
Yeah, I guess they're looking at a huge solar farm over on the west side of Torrington. Is that correct, up near Bosham?
Yeah.
It's a much, much, much bigger than East, and and the same issues are gonna, many of the same issues are gonna apply.
Right. It's Torrington Litchfield property.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind, we'll move on to Agenda Six. If there are any other business by our committee members. Had enough tonight?
We.
Ray, do you have any more?
I, I don't have any more ordinances at this point in time. Thank you. But I, I definitely can find another one to work on.
No, that's okay. I think we have enough on the plate.
I do have another one in mind.
Let's save that.
Yeah, I'll save it.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that we have a lot to work through.
Yeah.
Near term.
All right. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? The meeting is now adjourned.
Members who are sold at forty four P M. So I'd like to call this regular meeting of the city council and WPC to order. Today is Monday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Councilmen and women attending the meeting this evening in person, I have Councilman Cavanero, Councilwoman Riwet, Councilwoman Manichia participating via Zoom. I have Councilman Oliver and Councilman Waldron. So we have our quorum. And before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and place the flag?
The legislature just certified the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay. All right, jumping in, item number one on our agenda this evening is public comment. So I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section Four, subsection E of the City Council and WPCA, meeting rules of procedure.
Some.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Riwet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Mr. Buddhist.
Good evening, everybody, and the audience too. It's very few, but I don't, but I haven't been here in a while, but I figured I'd give my presence tonight, being that it's Monday night. Monday Night Raw. Here we go. First off, the car show was excellent Friday night, but I had a lot of people complain to me and I couldn't do nothing about it. Listen, if the city ordinance or the city council, whatever, whoever's in charge or whoever they do, listen, they need rest rooms. Those are portalets, toilets. People were talking to me about, I said, go behind that tree. And this place where we live is all locked up. I said, go to the city hall. No, they go try that. The doors are locked. Why? If the city wants that type of stuff downtown, they want to close the room and there's food vendors there. God damn it, they should have a toilet there so people can go. There were so many people that came to me and told me about it. I says, when I go Monday, that's the first agenda that I'm gonna say.
I, I just, I would just ask you to be respectful with your language. Thank you.
I got carried away, but they, they were very mad at me. And I says, I'll do my best. Next time there's a car show, I don't know who's in charge or who ain't in charge, but if they want a car show, the city should tell them they need portalets. That's number one. Okay, we're talking just before this other little meeting here about trees. Mr. Drew here, EverSource puts it along Oak Avenue down here by the ballpark. I take my walk pretty much every morning to Carbone's and to get my paper and a coffee. One day they were there planting. I saw, wow, look at that, planting nice trees, beautiful. Oh, that's EverSource. Well, you know what? How come they don't put the, the, the guys on the whole, the trees, the trees are leaning like this? It's on a slope going down where the basketball court is on the green there. The slope is going down like this. The trees are like this. Why couldn't they stake them back? I know EverSource was doing that for donation or something they had going on. That's number two. I wish they could straighten up them trees and look nicer. Once they start, pretty soon they're gonna grow, they won't be able to pull back. Okay, the other thing that my friend, Mr. Drew, was talking about, spending time driving around the city looking for people to throw trash on the side of the sidewalk, this, this and that. Well, I think he could spend his time somewhere in his own doing something more, more, more efficient. Pay job is some corners besides just spending gas, you know, it's five dollars a gallon, some places four fifty, four ninety a gallon. I mean, I think that should be, that's my, my thing when I heard him talk about that. So that's pretty much good. But the car show turned out pretty nice. But I was disappointed that it was, my friend wasn't there. The Trump mobile.
Thank you.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you, Mr. Buddhist. The floor is still open to the public.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve Ivey, Torrington resident. I do want to say the car show was very good fun. We, we could actually ask some of the local businesses to open up for, for the bathrooms also. So that's one possibility. I, I want to thank Vic Michelle for looking into the flags that were in question. It comes down to freedom of speech issue. But there were a lot of city residents and neighbors of these folks that are very profoundly upset over having to look at those displays that are rude. I, I would take that summit of verbiage is kind of an assault. I, I look at that word as like an attack though. So I, I would have a different interpretation. Maybe we came, it came into too common of a, a usage when we see it printed up and displayed as flags. I also want to say that both our political parties have done very good jobs picking up our political signs immediately after a campaign within a day or two, both parties have picked up their signs and people do take care of those signs on an orderly fashion. So I, I think that that shows responsibility of our, both our political parties here in town. So I want to thank you. Just this past week, we, we had some outside of town, people put their, you know, political signs in front of, you know, churches on Route Eight and all sorts of places. I, I see them from Torrington to Hartford. But a lot of people were, were upset that, no, these signs should not go in in front of churches or without their permission or people's properties or in the medians without anyone's permission. So we just want to make that statement clear to, to everybody. And if it's on your property and you don't agree with it, you, you can pull it up. But I, I do think that you could probably speak to this later on. Donor, that I, I think we do have someone at City Hall that does go around collects the legal signs for to, you know, tidy up those misuse. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Open to the public still.
Mine's on a happy note. Mine's on a happy note. Whoever had the idea to put the information about the bulk weights pickup in with the tax envelope. Fabulous idea. It went out, the taxpayers received it, the, the property owners received it, so they were able to broadcast it to their tenants. Fabulous idea. That was along the ideas I kept saying about get the information out. And that was, whoever thought of that? Fabulous idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Still open to the public? All right. Seeing and hearing no further comment, I will move into item two. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from August first, twenty twenty two.
So.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Manichia, seconded by Councilman Cavanero. Are there questions or comments or corrections? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I will entertain a motion to discuss for the discussion and possible adoption of an expense reimbursement policy for police department extra duty assignments pending our Board of Finance approval. Do you have a motion for discussion purposes?
Some move.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Okay. So you all have a copy of the proposed policy and had a chance to read through it?
Yes.
Just by way of a little bit of history, police department extra duty for decades and longer was always handled as part of, through the general fund. There was an expense line item within the budget. And the revenues that came in were deposited as general fund revenues. And year over year, if it ended up being even, it was even if it ended up being, we under projected the revenue, we would be short, or if we over projected, no, vice versa. We'd be, we'd have a surplus at the end of the year. And if we over projected the revenue, we'd have a shortfall for the year. The extra duty includes the police officers' time for extra duty, which is paid for out of the payroll and charged to an extra duty line item. The administration expenses that are dictated by contract, it's actually embedded in the police department's contract. Those funds are technically reimbursement for all of the other salaries and resources that are utilized during the year for scheduling of the extra duty, for tracking, billing, depositing, reconciling. So those are technically reimbursement funds. They're not payroll funds. They're technically reimbursement funds for the expenses that are budgeted and charged to the taxpayers. And then the vehicle use or equipment use that is billed out for any extra duty assignments. Again, technically a reimbursement to the taxpayer for the expenses. It's a vehicle that is purchased through, through taxpayers' resources, equipment maintenance charges through taxpayers' resources. So when we were looking at these year over year and looking at the unpredictability of projecting revenues and guessing the expenses, last year, we determined that it would be far easier to reconcile this account if the funds were tracked in a proprietary account or a separate account. So for fiscal year twenty two was the first year that we had done it. And we, at the end of the year, expenses during really good construction times can be a significant amount of money. And we wanted to make sure that there was a way to return those funds to the taxpayers to offset some of the impact of providing those services outside of the police officer's payroll. So the policy that we are proposing here is that the funds that are received for reimbursement of the administration expenses would be transferred out of that, that separate line item, separate account into the general fund. And we would, we would use those to offset any mill rate impact of the budget. The funds received for equipment or vehicle expenses, we wanted to be planful with that. It makes sense to return those funds to a vehicle replacement account so that we are making sure that we're funding at appropriate levels of vehicle replacements so we could provide vehicles on a regular basis for anybody that's doing extra duty. But we also recognized that there was a really good opportunity here to put some of those funds to, to work as well by transferring them into a capital reserve account for the traffic division infrastructure improvements. I think last year you may have heard in the traffic division's budget, there was an attempt to budget a significant amount of money, but far short of what is necessary to improve and maintain traffic signals, those traffic lights that hang in the middle of intersections, traffic boxes and all of that infrastructure. So we look at this as funds that are being paid in for road construction primarily. And how do we return those funds to the taxpayers in a very planful way that continues an investment in improving road conditions and, and transportation systems? So that's the nuts and bolts of why we wanted to bring this policy to the council for consideration, questions. Covers everything and ready to move it forward. So the floor is open. Questions or comments?
Please, yeah.
So currently, remind me again, the revenue from any of these events goes to the general fund?
Yes.
So the proposal is to actually put some of it into the vehicle replacement fund, which has and will be depleted pretty substantially. I remember right from the last presentation of the fund that we have in it, especially after we buy a vehicle.
Or patrol cars. I mean, there are, I agree with you. There are funding lapses in vehicle replacements that keep us now on a year to year versus the intent of the vehicle replacement, which was to build this big reserve. So when you needed to buy a million dollar fire truck, the funds were there. So yes, you're, the answer to that is yes.
So it never was put into that vehicle replacement fund? I mean, it was, over the years, a percentage of money had always seemed to go into that fund? Into the vehicle replacement fund?
From extra duty? No.
Not from extra duty, but generally in the budget?
Generally in the budget under vehicle replacement. That is, that is a line item in the budget. We budget, this year we budgeted $800,000 for that. So these funds would supplement that.
That's, that was my question.
Correct.
Currently going to get 800,000, 50% come, what is the revenue? How much of this past year did we get?
The revenue for?
These events, extra duty.
So Robin, I don't need to put you on the, on the spot, but I think the, the revenues from both the administration expenses and the vehicle expenses were, it was somewhere around $400,000. Correct? And then, sorry, Councilwoman, it, Ruwa is correct. I, I'm also thinking for the city clerk to capture the comment. Sorry.
At the end of fiscal year 22, we had a surplus of over $600,000 for administrative and vehicle replacement funds. So for, there was $232,000 for admin fees and $406,000 for the vehicle replacement.
How does this plan actually have any impact on the reduction of the mill rate? I got lost there a little bit.
So this plan with this policy and these reimbursement funds, these are funds that are being reimbursed by the various contractors, you know, whether it's Eversource or the water company or cable company. This is the-
Currently it goes in the general fund though.
It has, it has currently. And based on what we were projecting for expenses and revenue, which was always this, I don't want to say guesstimate, but it was based on, based on what do we see on the horizon for construction? What do we think we're going to get reimbursed? So we would budget a dollar amount for the expense and we would project what the revenue is. If the revenue exceeded the expenses that we budgeted, which did happen, that's what happened here, $600,000. Those funds actually would then devolve to the fund balance because it would be a year end adjustment. And that year over year for the last 15 years. So what we're saying is this policy is going to use a portion of the fees. Now, again, I was looking, we're looking at this through the lens of the administration expenses, which are actual operating expenses. You know, it's the financial office. It's the traffic division secretary, traffic division sergeant, traffic, anything that, that involves the scheduling of the work, the billing of the invoices, the collection of the funds. All of those are actual budgeted in and considered to be reimbursement of what the taxpayers have already paid for. So we're proposing those administrations right off the top, go into the general fund and offset the cost of those expenses. And in fact, this year, in anticipation of managing these funds in this way, we did project that there would be certain revenues considered the administration reimbursement. And when we were talking and presenting to the Board of Finance, what the mill rate would be if we utilize those funds, we're, we're getting credit to the taxpayers for those.
Yes, we budgeted, I believe in, in this current budget year, we budgeted $170,000 in revenue.
So the vehicle piece is the piece that I'm, I'm guessing is where you're saying, how does that benefit the taxpayers? So to your point, vehicle replacement, over the last several years, that was that one account that it was like, all right, if we only funded 50% of where we should be, or if we zeroed it out in 2018, 17, I think it was, when the state didn't adopt its budget until November, we zeroed it out entirely. You know, when you zero out $800,000 in one year, it takes a long time to recover from that. So what we're saying is this is a way for us to continue to build up that vehicle replacement account. We've already identified, you know, the police patrol cars are those vehicles that get put off a year or two because the funding levels are not there. So this is a way to replace those funding levels, alleviate some of the gaps, which instead of saying, all right, we're going to make up that $800,000 by charging $1.6 million next year. So this is a way to supplement what we're doing with vehicle replacements. And the other benefit to the taxpayers, the 50% that we're proposing to put in the traffic division capital reserve is again, during budget adaption, we cut $200,000 out of the traffic officer's budget. He was looking for, actually, I think he was looking for four, and we cut two out of his traffic division budget because we were trying to control what the mill rate increase was. This is a way for us to commit to those traffic investments, the funds necessary to support transportation systems, traffic controls, out of road work money. Did that answer the question? I know it was a lot. Sorry.
It's a lot.
It was a lot.
Yeah, it is. Just a follow up. I mean, and to no offense to that traffic division budget, but you had to cut somewhere.
Yes.
Out of this budget.
Yes, we did.
And, you know, I'm all about having money secured for the vehicle replacement fund, but doesn't necessarily mean that it would go for police cars. It's a large fleet of other vehicles that the city owns. So, so I don't know. I, I think you're trying to put some systems in place, you know, to be more accountable. And if that's the purpose of this particular proposal, but I don't, I'm sort of on the fence at this point.
Yeah. Please, Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah, there's a bunch of moving pieces here and, and almost all these are out of my wheelhouse. So let me ask you two, two quick questions here. Number one, does any of this, this Board of Public Safety have any input to this? You know, since so much of this lands under their, right, their aegis?
So this would not, none of this would fall under the Board of Safety. Board of Safety has, has control over department budgets. This is not a department budget, vehicle replacements.
Has never been, so.
Right.
Okay.
But they are represented on the vehicle replacement.
Correct. There is a representative from the Board of Safety on that.
My, my gut instinct is I would much prefer to have, has this been run by Board of Finance, this idea?
No, tomorrow evening is when we would present-
As a city councilman, I, I do not want to vote on this. I'd much rather hear what they have to say. These are the people who really understand how this, and have the experience to say, are there long-term consequences to this that we haven't thought of yet? That may be ultimately detrimental, maybe put us in a corner somewhere. I'd much rather hear from them before I, I say yea, your name.
Absolutely.
And it's just on the agenda as discussion, correct?
Correct. This is just discussion.
Vote on the policy, but I would agree.
It's a possible adoption. So I'd say just give, I'd rather not.
Discussion. Got it.
Just a quick question for clarification. So there is no current account set up for this revenue, correct? It goes into general budget?
No, we have a separate fund for, only for outside duty now, where we recognize all of the revenues and the expenses.
And it all goes into that fund, correct?
Yes.
So now we're able to track all that money. So it just doesn't flop into the abyss of funds, correct?
Yep. But so this was the balance, the surplus at the end of the year.
What's it do with it?
Right.
The expense side.
And that's, yes. And when you say the abyss, it's the fun, it's at the end of the year, it's the fund balance, you know? And I'm not sure that it's an accurate representation of where these funds were generated and, you know, and why we ended up with this big surplus at the end of the year. But this is identifying that surplus and budgeting, finding a way to budget, or you recapture and utilize those funds best in, to the benefit of the taxpayer.
Thank you. I, I think it's a good idea because now you're, you're tracking the funds more appropriately and you're putting them back into the city for, you know, not only the police department, but for everything, for the infrastructure, which benefits everybody. So I think it's a good idea.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I do agree with Councilman Cavanero. I think that I'd like to move to table the adoption of this policy.
Hundred percent.
And, you know, have it further discussed with the finance board.
Yeah. Any comments from?
Do you need a second, or is it?
No, because it was discussion and possible adoption. So my thought was exactly that, that this was discussion. And depending on where the council fell on this, I don't know if anybody from our Zoom participants have any questions or comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, then there is no reason to call the motion. It was discussion only. And we will move into item four. All right, item four. And the discussion tomorrow evening, I'll bring back the information from the Board of Finance and where they fall in our first meeting in September. All right, item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the acquisition of two unmanned aerial drones for the Torrenton Police Department on the recommendation of the purchasing agent and to award the bid to Cloud City Drones of Warwick, Rhode Island for $18,079.74, previously approved by the Board of Public Safety. Thank you, Councilman Cavanero.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions? I see Captain Barone is here.
I do have a question. What is the purpose of the drones for the police department? I think that is probably a question on a lot of people's minds.
So the purpose of crime scenes and stuff, I, we have reached out to Avon PD on a, on one of current, or they documented a crime scene that was on the side of the river. It gives us aerial views. We use some of the severe car accidents that our accident investigation team has used a video through the, through the path of the vehicle and over top of the scenes. We'll also, I mean, there's tactical applications we can use it for, different things like that. So there's a lot of stuff that we can get into this, you know, the unmanned aerial, the drone usage without having to put officers in, in any harm's way or in areas where, such as the river, we didn't have to get in. We could see this, and we could see everything and look for evidence.
I said, you know, I have this big brother in my head. So I, I guess my, I'm uncomfortable with it. And for all those reasons, I think it has its great, its purpose. It's the abuse of that drone on private property. And, you know, unless there is a motive, you know, to investigate a particular private property, yeah, I don't know, there's something about it that's, I'm uncomfortable with. So, and maybe it's just me, but I see its purpose, you know, as you're describing for mapping and for accidents. But how, how would that be regulated? How, you know, unless there is a complaint? You know, how, how do you manage, you know, an officer that just wants to see what's going on in a private property without any violation from that property owner?
So all of our, Lieutenant Johnson's putting together the, this program. All of the pilots that we have will be licensed through the, and go through the training. The training can take, you know, up to a couple of months or even longer. If, it depends on how fast the officer works through the program. So I, Lieutenant Johnson is going to monitor everything. He's going to be in charge of the whole program. And he's going to take, make sure that it's used for the purposes that, you know, it's designed for. We're going to have two of them and one's going to be a little bit smaller than the other.
Do you understand my concern though?
I, I do understand your concern. You want to, you know.
Infringe on the property owner without any violation, you know, of that, of that particular property. So anyway, thank you.
Yes.
Please, Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah, I, I have, I have some of the same concerns. First, just, just a technical question that is online. These particular drones, why, why was this company, are these in use by other police departments, be specific?
So DJI is a big company. Lieutenant Johnson did a lot of research into them. Other departments are using the same product. And so that's one of the reasons why we, we ended up going with that.
With them, okay.
That company.
And what do we have? I mean, privacy is going to be, I mean, there's going to be, it's, it's an enormous question and to your point. I mean, people, Saturday night, people are having a party back there. They have a graduation party and neighbors are complaining, would a drone go in and have a look see at that party?
No, there's going to be a whole protocol that's going to be set up.
Well, I would like to see that protocol. I would like the city council and our city attorney to look at that. Okay? I mean, these are hard privacy questions all of a sudden that, you know, this technology is brand new. And, and I would feel a lot better having a more extended conversation about what kind of controls are going to be in place before we just say, yeah, go ahead, send that thing anyplace.
I have, I have a question that relates to it. If it's okay. So barring a crime scene, accident scene, obviously that's a different situation. Something has happened, right? Someone called you guys and said, something happened. You show up and you're investigating. So a scenario like Councilman Cavanero said, a party or something like that, is that something where you have to get a search warrant to use a drone currently in the regulations?
It would all depend. I mean, right now, they fly planes, helicopters over and do, you know, different searches, different things like that. So I'm not sure on what the guidelines are going to be, like distance, height wise, things like that, where the, somebody's curtilage ends and, and begins in the airspace. I'm not sure whether, what they would do. For a party, a noise complaint, that's really not, I don't believe that's going to fit the policy. A missing person, now that could be a whole different story, you know, that we could use, that we would use the drones for.
And if I, if I may add, these are valuable tools in police enforcement. Almost every police department has one or two. And we also reached out to our insurance carrier, Kerma, to say if we were to determine that it was necessary to make this investment, you know, we are a city of 40 square miles. You know, that's a lot of ground to cover if a drone assists in accident investigation or missing persons, or in that one situation where the evidence they were looking for required going through a river that is moving rapidly. And Kerma said, absolutely, the city is covered for all of that. I, I would say that the police department and my conversations with the police chief give me a high level of assurance that whether it's protocol that they can or cannot share publicly on these things. But there are strict policies on the protection of privacy that have to be observed.
Where are these, ma'am?
The, so the question about whether or not they can share all of their protocol and- so the question about whether or not they can share all of their protocol on these things, I'm not sure that all of that is stuff that can be shared publicly.
I was like, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this. I do understand why police departments should have this. I do. You know, and, and I agree. And, and I will ultimately vote for, I just want to put the car before
Okay.
The horse before the car and, and make sure that as a council, what is that? I can't read that.
Is it?
Dave.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm hearing, so Councilman Oliver is saying, sharing the same concerns about privacy would prefer to see the standard or policy before voting on this item. Okay.
And a lot of that is going to fall under what you're talking about is going to fall under search and seizure laws. I mean, which, you know, we're not going to fly, well, as far as if I'm understanding what your, your concern is, flying it up over someone's wooden fence to see what they're doing in their backyard, that's, you know, that's, that's going to fall under.
We're, we're in the business of, of taking departments, procedures and policies and basically explaining them to the public. That's, that's what we're elected to do sort of, okay, here. And this is, this is now a, a very potent and robust new technology that we're authorizing. And I would like to have some clue, I would like to have some sort of context for how these, how these decisions are being made. I'm not saying I want city councils to make them. I'm not saying it all needs management. I would just like to have a much more, a clearer idea of how these, what these policies are in general and then how they're, they're implemented. So we can explain to the public. They see a clone, you know, they see a drone flying over their neighbor's house for some reason. We can give them a reasonable explanation as to why that was occurring, okay?
If I may, good questions, but I think that the principle, the same principles with regard to due process and privacy apply whether a police officer is driving in a police car.
Yeah.
And driving onto somebody's prop, property. Unannounced and maybe without good cause. The same principles apply to this. It's just another way of surveillance. And I think that ultimately when the guidelines come down, and I agree, we probably should see them. But I think you're going to find that they really apply across the board, whether using drones or not using drones. There are certain certain rules that apply to due process. Yeah.
And I think I'm not sure where, where Ms. Rose is at. But I would like to see them first before approval. I just think that's the appropriate sort of process for us as a city council. That's my two cents.
Yeah, and I would, we're agreeing way too much here tonight. I, I'm respectful to, you know, the comments that are made, but I do feel at this point, I'm not going to support the purchase at this time. But I absolutely understand, you know, what the intent is, but I feel there's too much risk in terms of intrusion of, of personal property. And it is one thing to see a car come onto our property. It's another thing to see a drone in the air over your, over your property. So I'm, and I know with all due respect, to know that you have protocols in place for normal. I can, I can see, but
Search and seizure.
Search and seizure. But at this time, I'm, I'm going to vote against it.
So do I hear?
Can we revise to, to approve pending review of the department's operational policies? Does that help you get?
It's a sub motion.
The next step.
I hear a sub motion to approve pending receipt of the
Pending presentation to the city council of, of the governing policies.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that sub motion?
We'll do other, yeah, okay. Is there a motion?
I was just going to move to table it at this point until we have more.
I, I have a motion, a sub motion to approve pending receipt. David Oliver seconded. I'll call that motion. Move to approve pending receipt. And a presentation to the council about those overriding policies and procedures.
That, that would be mine, but, but in order.
So I have a motion. You made your motion first. I just have to clear the table of the motions.
No, I, I made mine first.
You made yours first.
Okay, okay.
You made yours first. David seconded.
Okay.
Um, so I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm waiting for David. I know he doesn't have a microphone. He's saying.
Well. Yeah.
I, right, that's three I's opposed.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Okay, three to two. So we will move forward with acquisition. But this council wants to see a presentation on policies and the procedures and protocols.
It should have an acquisition pending.
Pending approval. Got it.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's the final, to me, that's the final step to say, okay.
And if there's any portion of that, that the department feels needs to be presented in an executive session for whatever reasons. Then we'll make sure that we put that in an executive session so that the information can be shared.
Yeah. And just my two cents, as much of this discussion, I would prefer to be made public.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll review the policy.
Really, my, my focus here is making our public feel comfortable with this, that this, to Vic's point, attorney Michelle's point, that this is nothing different than what we've been doing all along. It's just yet another way of doing it. And making they sure that the public hears that and they can't hear that if we're in executive session. So as much as the presentation is can be in public, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to item five. Services for the elderly. This is three separate motions. First one, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Commissioner Dennis Pezzi unaffiliated from the alternate, from alternate to voting commissioner with a term ending July sixth, twenty twenty-five to replace Commissioner Raymond Ashelman, who has completed his second term.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the motion? Carry none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's appointment to a second, three-year term ending July sixth, twenty twenty-five for Commissioners Jean McCarrity, who is a D, and Art Mattiello, an R.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
I heard Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Elderly Services Commission to accept the mayor's appointment of Janet Risa Devi, who is a D, to alternate commissioner.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions?
Just the question, a general question, Claudia's here. Is there like a balance? Do you have to have so many of each respective parties? I don't know why we have
I'll take it.
D and Rs and U's on here, but.
I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the question. Our Elderly Services Commission works with Joel Sikorsky at the Sullivan Senior Center, those elderly services. And the answer is yes, any appointments that we make to a board or a commission must have a minority popular, uh, party. Minority, thank you.
Yeah.
What Vic said.
Thank you. And I apologize. I don't know why I kept thinking it. So that's the next agenda.
Yeah. Let me call this motion. Other questions before I call that motion? Right, hearing none. I'm going to call the motion made by Councilman Cavanaro, seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I called all those motions, right?
Yeah.
Item six, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Rachel Kelly to the Western Connecticut Regional Tourism District Board of Directors with a term set to expire on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
So moved.
So Minichia seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Logan Smith, who is unaffiliated, is a member of the Sustainable CT Ad Hoc Sustainability Team. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Christine Altman, who is a Democrat, and Thomas Kalanowski, who is a Libertarian, as regular members of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a three-year term set to expire September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions on the motion? Or the proposed members? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Christine Altman, D, and Dan McGinnis, D, as regular members of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term set to expire September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions on the motion or appointment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment, reappointment of Samuel Marino as resident commissioner of the Torreton Housing Authority for a five-year term from August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro, and actually I heard two motions first. Yes, Councilman Minichia. And questions on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the following budget transfer amendment requests for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, as further described in the City Comptroller's Letter dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, pending Board of Finance approval. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Councilman Cavanaro. Right, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the following budget transfers and amendment requests for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as further described in the City Comptroller's Letter dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia. Seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions?
Yes, a very general question. Remember the process, Mayor. All these are coming down now because your office needs to reconcile. I mean, why are they all showing up?
Yes, so for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two transfers, those are transfers that are just closing out the year for money that was appropriated to be, to be transferred into a reserve. And then the audit recommendations ask that you do the transfers at the beginning of the year, rather than wait until the end. But I think with the transition that we had in our office back in August and September.
I, I assumed it was something like that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the following budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as further described in the City Comptroller's Letter dated August fifteenth, pending Board of Finance approval. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, and seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. Are there questions on these transfers? And just for the record, these are the transfers. You will recall when we adopted our budget, we, we were instructed to find an additional two hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars in budget cuts. And that's, these are the cuts that we proposed for adoption. Last call for questions. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, fourteen, I'll entertain a motion by the city council, acting here and as a water pollution control authority to authorize the following budget transfer requests for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, as further described in the City Comptroller's Letter dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions on these? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A, item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion by the city council, acting here as a water pollution control authority to authorize the following budget transfer requests for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as further described in City Comptroller's Letter dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions? And again, to Councilman Cavanaro's question earlier, doing these transfers early in the year so that we get these funds in the appropriate fund accounts makes sense. No questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute the contract agreement and all construction change orders to Jay Lal, Lapa Luci.
Oh.
Yes, there is a file at the end of that. Lal, Lapa Lucio of Brookfield, Connecticut, for thirty-three hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred fifty dollars with expenditures up to thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty to be funded from the City of Torreton Pavement Management Program Bond Fund, further explained in City Engineers Memo dated August fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Minichia. Please, floor is open.
Mayor, this gets to what I spoke, was speaking earlier with Mr. Drew about outside in the hallway. It's come to my attention through various residents, some patrons of East Albert Street drinking establishment, that some of the work that's being done on the roads is, is not, is more like an extended patch job than it is like a actual street replacement. And once that conversation began, it was in front of, in front of the Berkshire, is one of those where it's, you know, you can see the, it's the, the center of the road or only sections of the road in long strips and it's, it's, it's neither fish nor fowl, is what it feels like. And I'm wondering why that is the case. And it certainly seems to be unsatisfactory to many, many people, that process. If it's, again, budgetary concerns, the general sense that I'm getting from people that I've talked to is that they'd much rather do fewer streets and do them correctly. And then get to the other ones when we can, then again, a, 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 I don't, I can't say.
That is a patch.
Yeah.
It's a patch.
Extended patch job.
So, to your point, it is just a patch. It was a patch that was performed by our street department crews
Yeah.
to tie us over until we rebuilt the street. We felt that it was in such poor condition that it needed an overlay. And we did it as economically as we could with our own forces.
Yeah.
Only costing us really the asphalt. It's a temporary measure until we can not only rebuild the road, but we also have to rebuild the sewer line through that area. And that complicates the design further because of the railway tracks that we have to go under. So that's not a reconstruction section of road that we can reconstruct.
Anytime. Several streets like this, correct?
No, that's, that one and, and a portion of Midgen as well.
Okay, because that's the only one I was hearing about.
Yeah, that's the other one too. And Midgen will be, Midgen is tentatively scheduled for reconstruction next summer. And we also felt that it needed, the street department felt that the road was rough enough that the, the damage and wear and tear on the plows, even for another year was enough. You know, chance of that, that we should do something with a temporary patch.
Uh, my recommendation would be for your sake, Mayor, the city council's sake, for the department's sake, that if we can just get a short article of law to let people know that this is, no, this, we don't consider this street replacement. This is.
Yeah, it's, it's by no means anything
Okay.
Permanent or that we, that we spend a great deal of money.
Save your department a lot of adjuvant if you could get something out in the press about the situation.
Certainly.
And, and, and this, what we're proving right here, this three hundred thousand dollars, this is an actual street replacement. This is the.
It's a full reconstruction, yes.
Full reconstruction, top it up and rebuild. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, floor is still open to questions, further questions. And I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 17, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council, acting here and as a water pollution control authority, to approve the following payments from Fund Number 490, Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvements. And you see the two invoices to rate Pierce for project design study. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Minichi. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to, um, release the sewer use liens as itemized in Corporation Council's member memo dated August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated and listed August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 20, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And around the room, Captain Barone, is there anything else that you wanted to add this evening? Thank you. Anything, Mr. Towsey? We have will we have, Claudia, anything that you wanted to add about? Nothing from the clerk's office, Ron, and anything from finance? Okay. Corporation Council?
Yes, I would, uh, take a couple of minutes, if I may. Uh, Mr. Iveyne, uh, earlier complimented me, I think it was a compliment, with regard to the uh, report I gave concerning, uh, offensive signs. And I just wanted to say that, thank you for that, but I also wanted to recognize one of the moving forces be, behind that report that I made, and that is the person who's sitting here tonight. I practiced law for going on to sixty years. And I've worked with interns over the years, and oftentimes, when you work with an intern, it's really more work than it's, uh, worth. Except in this case, uh, I have an intern sitting in the audience here, Tom Kalanowski, who has been here for the past two or three months. Tom is a, uh, third year, a first-year law student. I say third-year law student because his, his work indicates almost the third-year law student's quality. Uh, Tom has helped myself, and I know he's worked with the mayor uh, over the past two or three, uh, months, uh, doing wonderful work for the city at no cost to us, I might, uh, might add. And I just wanted to say to, uh, everyone here that I want to recognize him. Tom, would you stand, please? And, uh, thank you so much. Say, uh, as I said, a first-year law student, actually, who has a full-time job beside that. And oftentimes, you find that, um, lawyers who actually go to law school uh, under those conditions, one person that I'm sure many in the room would recognize is the name of Joe Galicchio, who went to law school at night while he was a teacher, was a wonderful lawyer. So, uh, I just wanted to recognize Tom, uh, for the work he's done, uh, and he's a very quick study. Oftentimes, when you ask an intern to do something, it takes you more time to explain what it is you want them to do. Uh, but Tom's such a quick study that I have to tell him what it is we need once, and it was done uh, in a very short period of time, very efficiently. So, thank you very much, Tom.
Well said, and I think just on the tail that I would like to add, um, Tom is no stranger to, um, public service. I think, uh, at the age of thirteen or fourteen, Tom came to City Hall uh, and met with the then-mayor, Ryan Bingham, to discuss, uh, development of a committee, the Trails Network Committee. He and, uh, a few of his classmates and friends from school worked together to get that off the ground. Ryan then recommended, uh, his appointment to the Mayor's Committee on Youth. I served as a liaison as a councilwoman to that board. And, uh, on the Mayor's Committee on Youth, his leadership skills emerged, you know, quite early and quite strongly. Um, they did some great work, um, in really infusing energy into that committee and making it what it is today. So beyond his, um, legal acuity, um, there's a real heart to public service. Uh, when something caught his eye in the newspaper, or as he was following some, uh, legislation, he would send a quick email off saying, I think we want to pay attention to this. Or when I sent out a, a quick question about an interpretation uh, and some guidance on developing an ordinance, uh, his responses were usually twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you know, with some really solid research. So, I would agree, not only am I expressing my gratitude for the work that he does as an intern, but I express my gratitude for what he does for this community, um, on a regular basis. You all recognize the name. He was reappointed, um, to the, um, Inland Wetlands Commission Board earlier. So his service is certainly not over. So, thank you, Tom. All right, item 21, I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, second by Councilman, uh, Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so, starting to my left with Councilman Kevin Arrow this evening.
Uh, sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't want to beat this to death, but just based on, as you see, the, um, the, the very strong reaction to, um, consideration of the drone, uh, discussion, I would just recommend that we could get this, the next sort of presentation um, in front of the council and the public as soon as possible, because once this hits the news, it's gonna be much discussed and, and I think it would help us all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, and I just would also remind everyone, the Board of Safety already reviewed all this and went over all of this and approved it. So, when you say when it hits the paper, um, I'm wondering if that already did hit the paper.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, and, um, we'll look for the September 6th, um, meeting to bring back to the council.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rowett?
So, we did have an ordinance committee meeting, um, at 5:30 today. Um, normally, we don't open it up to the public, but we did tonight. But I do think we, it was a productive meeting, um, particularly on the ordinances presented to the committee for discussion. We, um, will be working a little bit more on the food truck ordinance. Certainly, our solid waste ordinance, um, is gonna take some time, um, to review, but appreciate Ray Drew, who attended the meeting with more explanation, and we will have probably a proposed new tree ordinance that, um, still further to discuss, but, uh, good productive meeting in terms of next steps on, on those agenda items. I'm excited about Fish's celebrating their fiftieth, um, anniversary, and I get to attend with a citation on behalf of the mayor, um, on Thursday night. So, if anyone wants to go, I think it'll be a, a good event, um, you know, celebrating the good work they've done in the community. So, um, I do just want to comment on, you know, I, I want to thank, um, uh, council that was in place, uh, a few years ago, when Verge approached the citing, citing council uh, for their project, and the city did, and I think it's important to have on the record again, oppose the project, knowing that there are other applicants in other areas of the city. So, um, as, you know, as things happen, the promises made by Verge have not followed through, um, as noted by now many people who think, for some reason, they don't realize that the Hartford Diet, Diet, Hartford. Thank you. Um, owns the property with a twenty-year lease now, to then Verge, and now I understand it's bought out by another company, so, um, I, I think one of the discussions in our ordinance committee having to do with, um, any kind of oversight or potential oversight or state projects, and I would say that since the citing council is a state agency, that, um, we'll further discuss that as well. Anyway. Is there any happy notes of the, I have to say, the car show, I haven't been to one in a long time, but my two-year-old grandson is in love with cars. Um, and just ood and odd, along with my other two grandchildren. And I hope the Torreton Fire Department, um, did well with their fundraising.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Councilman Minichi?
Um, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron, anything this evening?
Nothing, nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, and Councilman Oliver, I know that you're without a microphone. Nothing from you. Okay, sorry. And I'd just like to answer the one question, uh, regarding the, um, to the, to the point of the car show and the restrooms. Yeah, there was a miscommunication. There was a request to have the restrooms open. I was downtown. I did open the building for the restroom use. Uh, it got locked again after I left, and then I ended up standing out there for over an hour letting people in. So, the restrooms did get opened, and I actually stood there and entering, uh, allowing people entrance. Um, I almost thought it was a campaign strategy at one point. Well, there was a lot of gratitude.
Was, I bet I had a good slice of humble pie.
I, yes, absolutely. All right, so, uh, with that said, I'll move into item number twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, as, uh, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Uh, any questions, or excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're open to the public again on agenda items. Mr. Buddhist, agenda items. Okay.
Yeah, Ray Buddhist here. Um, I do have agenda on the, the drones. We're going into the twenty-first century, am I right? Okay. The drones are like, when you go to the grocery store, or you go to any kind of store, you got all these registers open, nobody wants to work. You go to the drone again, here we got the drone overhead, he's, he's circling, and he's cir. That takes away from another guy or somebody that could be working. But, like I say, if it's used in the right way, the drone, I think it might help. But, there again, everything's going to the twenty-first century, and, uh, it just keeps moving forward. So, like I say, the drone is, is okay, but I don't like it. I'm like, myself, flying over private property, or a party, or scooping in and see what he's doing over here. That's, that's not what it was supposed to do. If it's gonna be used the right way, and honestly, the right way, sometimes I know people get, ah, let's just see what we can do with this. That's not the way to look at it. So, don't be surprised someday, that's flying over somebody's private property, and somebody opens up a bang-bang. Shoot it down. I don't know. That's the way I look at the drone, but it's the twenty-first century, and I, I do think if it's used the right way, I got no problem with it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buddhist. Last call for public comment. All right. There being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow and Councilman Minichi, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.